I'm running a little late. It is February 24th. Welcome to our regular Town of Reinbeck meeting. Would everybody please stand up? I am by allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which you stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A couple of announcements. We are still Tyler Technologies, our company that has done our townwide reassessment and evaluation, is still taking meetings with anybody who has any questions or concerns about the recent valuation of their home, so please reach out to Tyler for an appointment or even now we speak with our assessor. It's just good to go through the process and answer any questions they have. Also, all exemptions for property taxes, whether it's agricultural, wholly exempt, senior or veterans, are due in the assessor's office by March 2nd. So anyone who has any type of exemption on his or her property, please make sure that you get the renewal papers in by March 2nd. Our assessor's office does follow up on this, but please get it done. Does anybody else have any? Okay. You know, I have the trail committee here, and I just wanted to sort of talk publicly about what we've been talking about with them. Mark, do you want to come up, or is Yvonne? So, just for the public, I guess last year we had a rousing crowd here, sort of asked us to support and start working on a townwide walking and/or biking trail, especially to connect the gardens with the Thompson-Mazarella Park along Reincliffe Road. And then we expanded that to say, let's connect the train station along Reincliffe Road to the gardens and the Thompson-Mazarella Park. And we also looked at creating a trail along Astor Road to, on the north side of the gardens on Astor, to connect to the village pathways just by the water station. So these are some of our citizens we did on our trail committee, and we did commit funding to the budget in 2020 to start looking at this. So, I don't know, do you want to generally bring us up to date, and then I can tell you what I've learned? Thank you.
Okay, so just, um...
Will you just tell everyone your name?
I'm Yvonne Pierce. I'm the chair of the, we're calling ourselves the Reinbeck Pathway Partners. We started in the gardens about two years ago. Gardens residents are wanting to create a safer walking route into the village from the gardens. And we've been working with the town, the village, various land trusts in New York State to explore different options for the pathways along Astor Drive and Reincliffe Road. The committee has since grown to include residents from all three of the garden spaces, residents in the woods, homeowners along Astor Drive and Reincliffe Road, into the village of Reincliffe, and the town board, and other members of the community that are interested in this initiative. So we're much more than just a gardens committee now, and it's much more broadly based. Our rationale was that Reincliffe Road has no pedestrian or bicycle markings, and at times limited sightlines, making walking and cycling very dangerous along Reincliffe Road. Astor Drive is also very narrow and curvy, and the vehicle traffic along these roads tends to travel at excessive speeds. It's also heavily used already by pedestrians and bicyclists. In addition to the single-family homes along Reincliffe Road and Astor Drive, the woods, condominiums, Wells Manor, there will be 239 units in the gardens now when it is completed this year for a total of approximately 360 residents in the gardens alone. Astor Drive and Reincliffe Road are already heavily used by pedestrians, bicyclists, joggers of all ages, including children and seniors accessing Star Library, the park, and the swimming pool. And it is really not safe along that road. Pedestrian access to both Reinbeck Village and Reincliffe would help reduce parking problems in both of these centers, and we hope would also help boost businesses. Pedestrian walkways are environmentally friendly and support community action initiatives against climate change. The pathway would connect to public transportation hubs such as Amtrak and the Loop bus route, benefiting ridership on both the train and the bus potentially.
Where's the bus route?
It stops right on Main Street.
Right, I mean...
This, of course, also encourages healthy and safe outdoor activity and access to existing recreation and community facilities. And the pathway that we are envisioning would traverse beautiful Hudson Valley, scenic countryside, and historical sites, so we think it would be a really welcome addition to the community for not just residents, but people coming to visit the community as well. So that's a little background.
Thank you.
My name's Mark Dixon. I'm a professional engineer, and I live on Astor Drive. My neighbors at the garden recruited me over the summer time, and I was reached out to because they thought that my property might be a property that would be utilized for the pathway. So it was initially reaching out to property owners to get people involved. And so being a professional engineer, that was a little bonus that they got. So we've been working on trying to think of a good way to make the pathway work. Initially, what seemed to be focused around the gardens to the village. At my first meeting, we had Nancy Richard, who was a member of the Conservation Advisory Board, and she expressed their vision of the pathway going all the way to Reincliffe. So we felt it was a good way to partner up and team up with these joint visions. And so we are now looking at the pathway, walkway from Star Library. We think we can, we've looked at the site, we'd like something, we're envisioning asphalt five foot wide, all of the details are still to be worked out, but we're thinking of a continuous asphalt walkway about five feet wide, which would initiate the Star Library down to the Highway Department garage. And from the Highway Department garage, we have an opportunity, there's a piece of property which belongs to the gardens and was originally set aside for this purpose, for a bike way and jogging path, which hasn't been utilized. Some of the infrastructure's there, but there's a strip of property that runs from the Highway Department garage all the way to River Road behind all the streets on the north side of Reincliffe Road. So we think that that would be a perfect opportunity to get the pathway in without impacting many people's property. And then from River Road, we're looking at getting to Long Dock Road and then down to the train station. From Astor Drive, we were considering already, there's a pathway to the woods, and we would like to extend from the woods. And we've actually envisioned all, the whole length of Astor Drive at this point. There's a lot of walkers on Astor Drive, and the vehicular traffic is pretty constant and winding. We think that would be another good opportunity. To move forward, what we need is support from the town board. We would like to try to reach out to property owners and other state holders to get them involved early as we start to develop these plans. We want to try to be, we don't know exact property lines and right of ways, so that's another thing that we need to reach out and research. And we just want to try to get more people involved and get their ideas so we can do this the right way and get the most support from the community. And the last thing is we need to develop a plan and funding sources to make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I met with the Trail Committee for the Reinbeck Trail Partnership, which is a group of people, but it's our trail committee. And I guess on, was it on Friday or Thursday?
Yeah.
And I reached out to Jeffrey Anzavino from Sinek Hudson, because this is a big thing that they do, is trails. And he suggested that I call Alta, which is a, here, this is what they do. They do biking and walking trails all over the state, and they're based in Albany and Troy. So I spoke with them about what the process would be. And I got a quick little proposal from them. And what Alta would do was that they would do a trail feasibility study of existing conditions and an analysis of where trails could go within what we want to do. They would come up with recommendations, a description of the proposed trail with surface types, map and illustrations of typical sections of the proposed trails, concept level cost estimate, potential permitting requirements, and funding sources. They would also work with us on public outreach, developing a website and reaching out to all the people who could be affected by this. They would also have a final report with all of this stuff. And they would look at it as both pedestrian and biking. I've always said I think we need, like, what you're doing is amazing, but I really think we need a professional company to do this with us. And we have funded some money towards it, and, you know, it's something the board has to decide. This is a professional engagement, so I don't believe we have to bid out, but we certainly could bid out and talk to other people. They are recommended by Sinek Hudson as one of the top companies, but this is something we could look at. They quoted us a guesstimate price of around $35,000 for this. So it's well within what we have budgeted plus a little bit more, which we could do. So I would give this to you and encourage you guys to all look at it. I'll give it out to the board, but we should discuss how we'd like to proceed. Any thoughts or ideas? I can send this to you, Mark, because I don't, you want more, so I'll give you more. You can, I'll send it to you, and you can send it out to your trail committee. This is just how I think is the best idea to go forward. If you guys have any other recommendations or ideas, and I'm willing to look beyond this for other companies, or have you guys do that, do the research for us. Do you want to think about this and do your research, and we can put it on our next meeting agenda? Josh, you and I can work with Yvonne and Mark to go over this, and the committee to go over this, and see if there's any other people we should be talking to.
Yeah. Very good. Thank you for your support.
Yeah, we want to do this.
This is great.
I mean, and if we could do a biking and walking trail, that'd be awesome, you know?
Yeah.
So, that's what I have to say.
The path is on its pathway forward.
Path is on its pathway forward. You know, and maybe we can't afford to do two paths this year, and maybe we hire them to do one segment for us, and we develop that, and then we go out from there, you know, to connect the northern part of town and the southern part, and eastern and western to the village and to existing trails. It's something that we've always wanted to do and feel is important for bikability, walkability. That's what I have on this.
Thank you.
Good? Okay. I will send this out to you, Mark. You just first said, or Yvonne, both of you. Send it out to your peeps. Is anybody having questions or comments?
In terms of priority, I assume Reincliffe Road is the place to start.
I think so.
I think so. I think, you know, that would serve the most people. And I see people, I mean, I'm on Reincliffe Road two or three times a day from my house to town, and there are people walking with suitcases on Reincliffe Road. You know? It's a nice walk, but you want to do it on, you know, and part of what they'll also look at for us is what do we need to maintain this, you know, how do we plow it? But, you know, this is what we have to start developing, so we can have this. Thank you. Thanks for coming, Trail Committee. What, do you have something to ask? Should I take you before? Sure. I will, I'm looking for a motion for, this is TAB 11, Resolution 2020-082. May I have a motion? Thank you, Ed. May I have a second? Thank you, Alan. Sorry, this is 11.
It's TAB 11. Ready for a question?
Uh, did we, is this on the floor?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, sure.
The difference between the low bid and the second and third bids is so extraordinary that it makes me wonder...
Not to worry.
Would somebody get that in writing? Are we being lowballed or taught?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Alan and I invented these companies long ago. Semify has realized that they can, there's a niche for them in cemetery software right now, and everything that they are offering, these other companies are offering. He's just getting in at the ground level with a small company, and we're getting in with him. So what he's doing is he's being able to, there's this, there's this place for cemeteries like us, he's kind of like, not eaty-weaty, but kind of still small, where these cemetery software companies are just, they're just too much money, and we don't need what they offer. So that's why...
So you're satisfied that they'll do the job and that they're able to do it? Yeah, and I look at it, it looks pretty good. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're really lucky. Yeah. Right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, you said, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Chauncey, do you have anything?
Yeah, she answered the question, yeah.
Okay, we need, I guess, nothing more. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Good night. Going back, I will make a motion for Resolution 2020-068. No, I'm going to, why aren't, oh, our, our financials are buried, that's where it's...
You want to do that first?
I'm going to go with the financials first. Resolution, I'll make a motion for item four, Resolution 2020-075, for preliminary accounts, payables, abstracts, 2D, six checks totaling $58,741.99. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. I'm sorry that I'm all out of order here. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Going on to item three, I will make a motion for 2020-074, preliminary accounts payable abstracts, 41 checks totaling $78,041.33. May I have a second?
Okay.
Thank you, Alan. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2020-077, our budget transfers and amendments. That's item six. And I know I've skipped one. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Chauncey. Are there any questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. I will make a motion for Resolution 2020-076 for our capital projects abstract, one check totaling $3,858. This is item number five. May I have a second?
Second.
Ed, thanks. Did you say it out?
Yes, Ed.
Ed and Chauncey, thank you. Is there any discussion? This is for Tyler Technologies. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Okay, we've taken care of all the finances. Back to the top, I need a motion for Resolution 2020-068. This is item one, for our recreation program fees for 2020, which were tabled from our 2011 meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Chauncey. I just spread out to love here.
Okay, so, excuse me. I have some handouts that have a little bit of analysis on these fees. You don't need to pass that one.
Not passing that one out.
Okay, here's two more for those guys.
These guys?
You have one. And if you need one, it's just a fee, steady. What's different on here than what's on the attachment to the resolution is they left off daily admissions for seniors for some reason, and so that's on there. What I've shown is what the 2019 participation was for each of those categories. So, for instance, we go along the top line, the daily admission total for the pool was a total of 1,448 admissions. 986 were residents, 462 were non-residents. The revenue was $11,522, and the difference between the fees between resident and non-resident is from $7 to $10, which works out to a 43% markup, and I've got that analysis for each line. Basically, the Recreation Committee recommended that we keep these fees. The one area that looks like we could expand is swim lessons. Swim lessons only had a total of 72 participants, and most of them weren't campers. And we think that, the Rec Committee thought that campers should be incented to take swim lessons. Also, in particular, the fact is that lifeguards will all have water safety instructor certifications, and so it virtually costs us nothing in addition to have swim lessons. So we wanted to create an incentive. So they proposed a 10% discount for campers, because we weren't getting much penetration into that market, called that. The second change that they recommended was to give a discount to camp for second and third children in a family. As you can see, there were only a total of five kids that were third children in the camp last summer, and a total of 28-16, which is 44 kids who were second children in the family. So it's out of a total of 300, almost 350 kids in the camp, 350 weeks of kids, which is, on the average, in six weeks, about 55 kids per week. So, and the markup between resident and non-resident's about 40%. I suggest that we look at these fees again in the fall, in terms of maybe trying to increase revenue. I don't know that we should try to increase revenue now.
Are you proposing that we, so I understand that we have to add to this recreation program daily senior pool, which is at four and seven.
Right.
So I'll make a motion to amend the fee schedule to add a daily senior pool at the 2019 rate of four for a resident and seven for a non-resident. May I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's added to the fee schedule. You are saying that you agree with the 10% off for campers?
Yes.
Why don't we amend that to 65 and 80, just to round it down from 67.50?
Sure.
All right, I'll make a motion to amend 10% off for campers, residents to $65 and non-residents to $80. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. All in favor of amending that?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Manta rays are staying the same?
Yep.
Summer camp is staying the same?
Yep.
And are you recommending camp discounts?
Yes, I think we, you know, I think that'll help. It isn't that much money, because there aren't that many kids, but there are families with three, with two or three kids.
What are you recommending?
I think we ought to leave it the way it is. Or, or, or we could do the second and third at 25 off and leave the 50% off for the third child off the, off the list.
Are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Um, second, second and beyond?
Yeah, or 25% off.
At 20% off?
25.
Sorry, I'd like to make a motion to amend camp discounts to second child and beyond that number, summer camp, 25% off, which is 105 for a resident and 105 for a non-resident for a week. And I'd like to make a motion to strike three-plus children's summer camp 50% off. May I have a second? Thanks, Alan. All in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Okay, we've, we've amended the fee schedule, and it's on the floor. Should we vote to?
Alan, what's the, this is one of the losses, the numbers are the same this year as they were last year. What's the...
Well, the idea would be to get more, more kids.
But what's the actual number lost? What, like, is it...
Camp-wise, we made maybe $2,000 last year.
Yeah.
So if this eats up a little bit of it, he's saying that there are 20, say, just for 28, 16, and five, right? 28 plus 16 plus five, 49. We, you know, if we get a little bit more in swim lessons, yeah, but we have, we're, we'll be subsidizing it maybe $1,000 to $2,000 for giving people a break. And I mean, the subsidies will come in pool cleaning support.
Yeah, the, yeah, the pool is really the, is really the thing that sucks up a lot.
Right.
I keep trying not to make a pun here. The pool really is what takes the resources. Given that you have the pool, for instance, swim lessons and manta rays is gravy, because we already have the pool, we already have, it's already open, it's already being used, we already have instructors. So if we add 10 kids, you know, that's, that's 10 kids' worth of revenue that we could add.
Yeah, we're looking at $1,700 loss by giving second and third kids a break, but I think it makes it affordable for some.
And if we only have, and that's assuming we only have the number of kids we have this year.
Yeah. It's tight, but it's doable, and people have asked us to consider it. We've run camp in a deficit for many years. We're doing really well.
Yeah, I think you're right.
You know what? Did we vote on this? No, we didn't.
No, we haven't voted on it.
The other issue I have is on late pickup fees. Have we always done this?
Yes.
At $15 and $60?
Yep. It's the first time, the policy or the practice is when the first time it happens, they let it go.
A minute? Really? If someone's a minute late, they're going to charge 15 bucks?
Right, John.
Okay.
That's what they do.
Okey-dokey. Any further discussion? All in favor of adopting?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Moving right along, I need a motion for Resolution 2020-070, our coal and chemical supplier for 2020.
I'll make that motion.
Great, Ed. May I have a second?
Okay.
Thanks, Chauncey.
Would you like a motion?
What? No, because I think you, sure.
Yeah, I just want to apologize to Bobby Fitzpatrick, our building and ground supervisor, and Jessica. They had all the information here, I just didn't read it all, and there's so many reasons why one company beat the other. There's no, they didn't even match the bid at all. There's no delivery charges, they put all the chemicals in the pool themselves, we don't have to do it. They beat in every category of chemical except for one. And no deposits were required, so there's every which way that ESC wins over SC3.
So you were asking us to award it to ESC Environment?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. It doesn't say in the resolution that we're awarding it to ESC.
Doesn't appear that.
Does that matter?
It says we're going with the recommendation from the maintenance department, which is a part of this.
Yeah, the memo would say what.
Okey-dokey. Looking, item number eight, Resolution 2020-079, transfer station hires. May I have a motion?
A motion.
Thank you, Ed, may I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Chauncey. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have to go back a tab to seven. It's a random number generator.
Any opposed? So moved. Sorry, what did I forget? Another thing?
Yeah, it's number seven.
Okey-dokey, thanks. I'm looking for a motion for Resolution 2020-077, summer 2020 rec program hires. Thanks, Alan.
Yes.
And may I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. Is there any discussion?
We got two good people here.
Oh, they're coming back. Catherine Mostello is our fabulous camp director and Samantha McClellan has our assistant camp director. Great, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. That's good news. Resolution 2020-080, I'm on tab nine, have I missed anything?
Nope.
This is, it says highway department sign.
It's not.
But it's not.
It's just a.
It's a welcome to Rhine Beck sign. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thanks, Alan. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ed. Guys, remember when Thomas?
Scout.
Biker did our, yeah, Biker did our, his Eagle Scout project and putting up those fabulous welcome to Rhine Beck signs? We are missing one. We've only put up four. We're missing one on our southern entrance on Route 9. It will cost us, I don't know, under $1,100, I guess, to get a second one from Timely Signs who made the first ones. And the highway department is getting all the permitting paperwork done from NICE dot and will install them. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Great. I will make a motion for Resolution 2020-081, waiving the building department fee for the equipment house. May I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Alan. Equipment House is a non-for-profit, in effect owned by the town. We lease it to the Equipment House resource. They need a building permit to put a porch on the Palantyne House and it would be like charging ourselves for a building permit, so we're requesting that we waive it. It's not waiving it for a non-for-profit, it's waiving it for a town entity in effect.
And the, the porch will be paid for by?
Them. We don't, we rent the house as to them and we have an agreement where we have to plow the driveways, give them $1,000 a year for tree maintenance, and mow the lawn, make, take care of everything else. But since we fund it and hold the lease, let's not charge ourselves a building permit.
Yeah, sounds like.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Is there any new business for the town?
You all saw the memo, the email about the full hours for manta rays?
Yep.
They, they basically agreed with the request we made for them to.
That's terrific.
Open up the hour.
That's terrific. Anybody else? I have one thing.
Just a question, do you have any minutes you want us to approve?
I don't think we do.
No, those will be on from March. The ones that I've been sending you, review?
Yes, yeah. They just didn't make the agenda.
Well, it wasn't fair that they came to you two days before.
No, thank you. We'll do them at our March 9 meeting.
We'll have a lot.
Which is also my birthday, so we'll have extra.
Oh, gee. What kind of a surprise.
Whatever you like to make. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that the highway superintendent has recommended that we get our senior van painted and we can just get it all painted white and get the bodywork done and have our town seal on it with Rhine Beck senior van. I'm going to have it on the agenda for the next meeting, I just wanted to tell you guys that.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll have to do a resolution at the next meeting. Do we have any new, other new business or any public comment on any non-agenda items or any agenda items? Anybody? Any questions, comments, suggestions, complaints?
Motion through.
Second then. Good night, everybody. Thank you for coming.
I'm going to pay a call.